Meeting of the City Council of Monday, December fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen. At this time, can we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Viera.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
Councilmember De Rosset.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the invocation by Ken Sylvia for the Youth for Christ, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me be here. Let's pray. Lord, I thank you for this city, for the men and women who care so deeply about it. Lord, I ask for protection of our officers, of our firefighters. Lord, I ask for continued blessings and funds to take care of those families who need the help. Lord, I pray for this holiday season, for the Christmas and the New Years. I just pray, Lord, that there be safety. Lord, I pray for just your peace to rest on the families, the children, the men and women of this city. Lord, we thank you for your goodness, and I just pray that these men and women who serve so faithfully, that you would also protect and watch over their families. In your name, amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, we have no presentations this evening, so we will move to Citizens Communications. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matter under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, I do have one speaker card, Brian Sontag from the Series Library.
Hello, everyone. Brian Sontag, representing the County Library System, and I'm here with some staffing updates, actually. I'm here to say that last month, I got transferred back to Modesto Library, so Series will be receiving a new branch librarian. Her name is Anne Montgomery. She's here with me today. She's going to come up in a minute and introduce herself. But I also wanted to say, even though I was only here for about a year, I think we accomplished a lot, and I appreciate working with the city. I know I worked with Tom with the renovation. Everything went really smoothly, so I want to thank you for inviting me into your community, and I think we got a lot done, and I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate all that you did in keeping us abreast of what was going on.
Hi, my name is Anne Marie Montgomery, and I'm actually returning to Series. I was the children's librarian here for three years, and then I went and worked at Modesto, and I led the program that renovated the library, and I'm so happy to be able to be back and work in Series. I just wanted to let you know that in, starting in January, we're going to be adding some programming. I'm going to be doing a Wiggled Worms program, which is in addition to our regular storytime on Monday mornings at ten thirty. This is for babies and toddlers and their caregivers. We're going to have a stay and play program where children can come to storytime, and then it can be like a playdate after that for moms to make connections within the community and find about other programs that we have at the library for early literacy. We're going to have craft days on Thursdays. Every Thursday, we're going to have crafts for children, teens, and adults, just on a rotating basis. This month's highlights, we're going to have some spin art and then an all-ages coloring craft, which they're doing nationwide, and it's a good opportunity for parents to get together, bring their kids, meet other moms and dads, and make connections with the community. I'd say thank you very much for letting me speak, and I'm very excited to be back in Series.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on a non-agenda item?
I can't believe it's been a year, and you guys have done a pretty decent job. I want to thank you for, you've kept track of the citizens' money pretty well, and you've done the citizens' business real well. Congratulations to Vice Mayor Klein and Councilmember De Rosset for winning your seats back, and Mayor Viera. It was a hard battle, but you won. I, I, I think maybe that you do need to go see your psychiatrist for going, what is this, your third or fourth time at this?
Second.
Second. Oh, well, see how, how long it seems, but you guys have done a pretty good job, but I do want to, I, I hope I'm not taking the thunder away from our police chief and our fire chief, but it's the holiday season. And first of all, ladies, don't leave your purses in your car where they can be seen. That's an invitation to window-breaking and purse-snatching. And don't leave the presents you buy in the backseat or wherever they can be seen. At least cover them up so that it doesn't look so inviting to the criminals. And be careful, all of you, when you're in parking lots, walking along. Watch what's around you every minute, because if you're reading yourself, looking at your cellphone or texting somebody, that's the time somebody can come up behind you and your cellphone's gone, or your purse is gone, or whatever, you know, so just be aware. And fire-wise, if you've got old lights, Christmas lights that you really like, but you've had them for years, put them in a nice place and keep them as memories, but don't use them, because a lot of times, the wires get frayed, especially if you put them on that real tree that you've had up since Thanksgiving, you're liable to have a house fire. So just be careful. We only have a few more days to go before a new year. Let's go out of the new year in good shape and start the new one. And I know you guys are going to carry on and do exactly what you're supposed to do, and if you don't, I'll be there just to give you a little nudge once in a while in the right direction. Thanks to all the city employees for everything they've do during the year for the city and the citizens. Thanks, Mr. Hallen, for keeping us on the right track, and all of the rest of, especially the, the people in the back rooms who do the things like sending out emails and so forth and keeping us all advised of what's happening, and I really appreciate it. I like living in Series. Otherwise, I wouldn't have been here for twenty-three years. So Happy New Year and a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we will move to appointments to boards and commissions. We have one this evening, and that is to appoint for the Planning Commission position. And we did go out and advertise for this. We had two applicants. One was Angela Horta, and the other one was our current Planning Commissioner, Cooper Condit. I did speak with Angela and also have had some conversations with Cooper. My recommendation would be to appoint Cooper Condit back to the Series Planning Commission. I think he's done an excellent job in the, the time that he's been there. In fact, he participates in quite a different, quite a lot of different things, and I think his input and guidance on the general plan update would be, would be something very valuable to the city. So that's my recommendation. Are there any questions, comments, or a motion?
I move, excuse me, Mayor, I move to approve your recommendation of Cooper Condit.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Just a question for Tom. Do I need to open this up to the public? Pardon? Do I need to open this up to the public?
Well.
I mean, I, I'll go ahead and do it. It doesn't matter. At this point, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on this item?
Good move, Mr. Mayor and council. This young man is outstanding. I've watched him the last few weeks, and he's, he's got his head on his shoulders, and he's heading in the right direction, and I think he's going to head us in the right direction.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember De Rosset.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the consent calendar items or one public hearing item? Okay, seeing none, we will move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. Is there anyone on the council that would like to have a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion?
Three B, six A, B, and C.
B, B, six A, okay. Okay, and then I guess how I would do this is I don't necessarily need to pull item three A. I can just say I will be abstaining from that vote. I'm sure you could do the same on three B if you want.
Well, I was going to do that, but I noticed in the minutes when Councilmember Klein was absent that he pulled it, and that was how it was done, so I was just trying to do it the same way.
Yeah, e- either one, I guess.
That can be changed to, you can vote on it yes regardless if you were here or not, because you're voting on the consent as one item. All you're saying is, yes, I agree with the minutes regardless if you were there or not.
Okay. All right, well, we can, it's up to you, Linda, however you want to do. If you want to pull it separately, we can.
I'll pull it separately because I can't agree to minutes if I wasn't here. What happened?
All right, and just to be consistent, then I'll go ahead and pull three A as well, and then we'll just be consistent across the board. So with that, I will entertain a motion. Oh, before I do that, is there anyone in the public that would like an item pulled other than the ones that were identified? Okay, entering now, I'll bring it back to the council for direction or action.
Move for approval of one, two, three C, five A, B, or excuse me, four, then five A, B, C, and D, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember De Rosset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Passes five zero. Thank you.
Okay, next, we'll move to item number three A. I'll go ahead and abstain for that, but it's the minutes of the November twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen regular council meeting.
Move to approve three A.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Klein. I have to get used to that.
Yes.
And Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember De Rosset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Mayor Viera. Abstained.
Abstained.
Okay, so four, zero, one. Thank you.
Okay, item number three B, approval of the minutes of December third, two thousand and fifteen, special city council meeting with Councilmember Rhino absent.
Move to approve three B.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Klein, a second by Councilmember Lane. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Councilmember De Rosset.
Yes.
Abstained from Councilmember Rhino. And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Passes four, zero, one. Thank you.
Okay, next, we will move to item number six, waive the second reading of three zoning ordinance text amendments for the proposal to implement programs as part of the City of Series two thousand and nine to two thousand and fourteen housing element. The proposed text amendments add definitions for residential care facilities, employee housing, and traditional and supportive housing as permitted uses in the city's residential zone districts in accordance with the laws of the state of California. The Planning Commission considered this proposal at their June two thousand and fifteen meeting and made a recommendation to the City Council to approve all three proposed text amendments. The City Council considered this proposal at their November twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen meeting and approved the three text amendments by a three-one-one vote. So item number A is waive second reading and adopt ordinance two thousand and fifteen dash ten thirty-two to allow residential care facilities as a principal use in the city's residential zone districts. Councilmember Rhino.
Well, I just pulled it because I would still vote no.
Okay. Any other questions on this item? Before I comment, do we have to take these separately, Tom, or can they be done?
I was just going to say, Mayor, you could take them all together.
You can take them all together. Okay, then I'll make my comments all together. When this first came out, I was staunchly opposed to it. I still am, and I, I, I don't like this being in here, but I, after discussion with the city attorney, excuse me, the city manager, it is my understanding that if these items don't get approved, then our general plan would not be approved?
Yeah, these are, these are critical elements to the approval of, of the next step in the process, which is our housing element, which is the critical element, critical process to getting our general plan approved. So without a housing element, our general plan can't be circulated and can't be approved. So this is really kind of step A of the process that will get us to the general plan, and with, without a, a approved housing element, our general plan would not be able to be certified.
So once again, the state seems to know how to wield a big friendly finger at us. So, well, I don't, I don't like this. I, I'll go on record on saying that I don't. But if I, if I have to vote in support of it so that we can move forward with what I think is the most critical document that we need to do, which is our general plan update, obviously, I have to support it. But having said that, I do want to go on record that I would want any type of residential care facility, support housing, transitional housing, whatever we want to use for the terms to meet the utmost design guidelines. I think as, well, the rest of the City Council doesn't know this, but one of the things that I'm going to be recommending as part of the general plan update is that we perhaps look at, in addition to the Planning Commission, a, a design guideline board or something that looks and, and has some real teeth into the, the development of, of, of what development looks like, so to speak. Now, whether that's an arm of the Planning Commission or not, I don't know, but, but I would definitely want to see something like that put in place, and I would want all of these facilities to not only be subject to that, but also pay their fair share of improvements, frontage improvements, and everything that a normal project would need to do. Now, the state may not like that, but I don't care. I mean, I don't think that there should be shown any favoritism on one program that another one doesn't get. So unfortunately, I don't know whose light's flashing.
Oh, that's me.
Okay. Councilmember Rhino?
Tom, do we, does our housing element have to be certified to be part of the general plan? I'm not talking about getting grants or anything. I'm just asking, does it need to be certified to be an element of the general plan?
It's one of the seven mandatory elements of a general plan. The housing element is on different cycles in terms of their certification, because it happens more frequently. We have to have vertical consistency within your general plan to make it legally sufficient. So the answer is yes. You have to have a certified housing element as part of your general plan.
That's interesting. That's all I can say, is because I've been told by a planner in another jurisdiction that it does not need to be certified only if we want to get grant money. That we can have a general plan without a certified housing element. It can just be a housing element, and you're saying that's not true.
We use our housing element and its certification to apply for a number of grants. As you know the housing grants, but we also apply for other grants which require a certified housing element, some of our parks grants, et cetera. So we've always adopted and had a certified housing element so that we can make sure that we can apply for those grant funds.
Okay, so then the answer is it doesn't necessarily have to be a certified element, but only if we want to get grants. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe you are correct.
Okay, thank you.
But, but for the general plan, we cannot get a certified general plan without a consistent housing element. Maybe defer to the city attorney on, on that matter is probably the best legal course. That's correct. Practically speaking, that's how it'd be effective. You need all the, all the elements.
Okay, consistent or certified?
Oh, consistent.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll open it up for the public if anyone would like to speak on this item. Enlighten us if you have any news.
Cooper Condit, eighteen oh nine Laylanyway. You know, I called all the council, and I told them my point of view on these housing amendments, and I just think they're bad amendments to have in our housing element. If we bend over to the state more than we have on low income and bad, bad housing, that's what we're going to be. And you guys know, I told you this at our general plan meeting, we have to decide what kind of city we're going to be. We're going to be the average Central Valley city that just does what the state wants and sprawls out. We might as well, we might as well be Modesto, okay? We have to decide to be Series and to stand up and tell the state, we're not going to take it anymore. And if we don't, that, that's up to you guys. I'm not a councilman. I'm just a commissioner, giving you my point of view, so you guys can do with it what you want. I appreciate Councilwoman Rhino standing up and saying no last meeting. I know all of you feel the same and don't want it, but let's, let's fight the state. Let's see what they do. You know, maybe they, maybe they won't do anything. And if our general plan doesn't get certified, do you guys know how many goals we achieved in our last general plan? Have you guys read over the implementation programs? Well, there was an implementation that the Planning Commission is supposed to review the general plan each year. How many, how many reviews did they do over that timeframe? There wasn't many. Implementation that I read said that was not accomplished. And that, that's sad, that we're spending a million dollars on this update, and we haven't accomplished much. And I hope that we can accomplish something in this new general plan and make our quality of life in Series a lot better. Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak on this item?
I have no choice. That's a hard act to follow, but he's absolutely correct. And I just wish that the League of Cities, California or whatever it is, Ken's been on there before, would stand up and tell the state, put their whole process and all that about, oh, they can't, we can't continue letting the state tell us how to run our city. We can't do it. If it's all about money, we're in deep doo-doo, because they'll hold that power of the purse over us, and we'll sit there and whine and complain, and we'll do nothing. But if we, as a city, you as a city council, say to the state, we're just going to struggle on without all of your money and without all of your rules and without all of your ridiculous things, look at the problems the state has. They can't even keep their own damn house in control. They can't keep their own house in order, and then they're telling us how to keep our house in order? That's about a sad statement. I personally know and have talked to Screwie Jerry, and I've talked to a lot of the legislators in the past, and they all say the same thing. Well, we have to have the money from the cities in order to do our job. They've been taking money from the cities for what? Since the beginning of Prop thirteen? How many years ago was that? Thirty-some? They've been taking the money from the cities, doing the state's business, which is taking the money from the cities and screwing everything up. We have to, at some time, say no. And I personally think that now is the time. We say to the state, you know, I think we can, together, we can achieve a lot more than with the state of California. Together as a city, we got to stop being slaves to the state of California and start being our own people, and start being people who look the state government straight in the eye and say, that's exactly how I feel personally. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Yeah, just a comment, since you brought up the League of California Cityship. I have diligently served on the League and as a League representative and on the Board of Directors, and I got to tell you, the League fights every day for local control. This here actually is local control. With this, without an Indian amendment, state's going to tell you what to do anyway. Bottom line, just like this marijuana thing that we have on the agenda tonight, right? We have to have that ordinance in place so the state doesn't come in and try to take over and tell us what we have to do. Unfortunately, you're absolutely right, and just as you served in, in the fire service for the state of California, you were told what to do, and you had to do it. Bottom line, that's the way it is, right? Government is not the perfect entity to tell anybody how to run their household, and they're doing that to the city, right? And so League of California Cities, as a Board of Director, I'm fighting constantly, whether it's for ordinance like this, or whether it's for gun control, or, you know, fighting against a lot of different things the state tries to do to us. And I bring up gun control because that's something that's big going on in the, in the state, and it's been going on for quite a while. So with that said, I don't like this any more than you or any other citizen likes it. But you know what? The state's going to tell us, if we don't have something in place, they'll tell us what to do, whether we get money or not. That's the way it is, because it's not us as policymakers for this city, right, that are trying to better this city. And, you know, Mayor, thank you for bringing up the points, because I think those are points that we should have in our general plan. You know, I remember twenty, over twenty years ago, talking about this very thing, about the housing element. What do we need it for? Tell the state to stick it. Well, same story came up then as it came up now. You know why? Because our legislators aren't taking control of this. And if you could talk to a legislator in Sacramento that is willing to take this on, believe me, when you talk about housing element, that's willing to take this on, you know what? I'll follow him all the way, because you know what? They're not there, because it's so powerful, because everybody's got to have a place to live. And when you put that in their plate, they're not going to fight it. Is there a better way? I think so. I think there are better ways. I think everybody should have the freedom to live where they need to live, and they should have the freedom to put in their front yards what they want to put in their front yards. They have the freedom to put bad lights on their trees and make bad decisions, right? So my whole point is, I don't think, and we made that point one time from this dais, none of us like this. But you know what? We do have a plan, and you're absolutely right, Commissioner Condit. We need to take our general plan, and you guys do need to oversee it once a year to see where we're at. I think that's, it's in, very important. I know when I was on the Planning Commission for nine years, it was starting the new part of it, right? And I don't remember in that nine years if we ever did. There was things that came up that we wanted to change, so it's a very serious document, more important than this housing element. It truly is. This is, this sets our city up for the future, and us as, as members and of this council, you know, that each of you- you know, that each of you entrusted us to, to serve up here and asking for all the input we can get because I think there has been bad decisions in the past, right? Not blaming anybody, it's just foresight, looking out, right? And I, and I agree. Do we just want to be a bedroom community? No. Do we want to be something different? Yes. This is the time. This is the time to do it. This is language right now that has to be cleaned up for our next housing element, that will get certified and, you know, whether it's money coming to the city, hopefully it benefits us all. But I think there's some things that the mayor brought up that we should put in and hold to the standards, just like anybody else would have to. So, you know, saying that, and I didn't take it personal from the League at all, but, but you know what? We fight for it. It's a, it's a constant battle up and down this state. And believe me, the Central Valley is probably in a place by itself. When I sat around the Board of Directors table and you've got Board of Directors in San Diego and over in the Bay Area or Los Angeles, believe me, their, their, their thinking's a lot different than mine. But you know, sometimes I got to convince them to help me out too. It happens. That's what it's all about. So, you know, again, we don't like it. I can, I think I can state, and I agree with, with Councilman Rhino and, you know, she's standing up here and saying that, you know, we, you know, she can't support it and going on record for that. God bless her. That's okay. I believe that we need to take it a step further and that's our general plan and I think it's important that we move this forward. And then with what the mayor said, I think we have to make some adjustments along the way. So that's my part and that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Tom, just a question for you. The only way that I would be able to support this is if we could put a section in the general plan that addresses design guidelines and everything related to this. Is that something that we can do?
Sure. Something that can be done. A lot of the facilities as defined here could move into a traditional, single-family home that wouldn't, wouldn't require any design guidelines. That said, we can have design guidelines for a number of things included in the general plan in terms of industrial buildings, multifamily buildings, commercial buildings, et cetera. And so we can have a classification for these types of uses as well.
What, I mean, what's wrong with, and maybe legally, Tom can tell me, what's wrong if we were to say, even if you're going to retrofit an existing facility, you have to improve it to a certain standard?
That would be a legal question. I, I think that some of these are fairly small in nature, where they have four or five individuals and they just move into a house like a normal family would move into a house.
Then they would be in violation of our, what we would have in the general plan. I mean, I'm not, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm just saying, if I'm going to support this, and, and who knows, before long, I might be in one of these residential care facilities myself, but, but I, I think I would like it to be something that is not an eyesore, something that, because I, I've been on this council when we've had somebody want to do a residential care facility. And, you know, we lined people in this room with everybody that was fearful of what was going to happen. Now, I don't think that ever came to fruition or if it did, it was short-lived. Or maybe they're living there, I don't know. But I know we had one on Thomas Street that we had some issue with. I don't know if they're still there or not, but...
The recommended approach, from a staff perspective, as we move forward with the general plan, the, the outcome of the general plan will be, in essence, a complete rewrite or at least a revisiting of our entire zoning code, which would be everything with any new measures or any new provisions that come out of the general plan, such as a design review board or something along those lines. That would be the, the cleanest approach because then it's a comprehensive, top to bottom, and that vertical consistency is then consistent. Obviously, that's going to take a couple of years to get to that point. That is the, the most efficient way to get there so that you ensure that we're consistent across the board. To do it now, and as Tom said, we can do it, but it would be, from a staff perspective, better to do that direction as a part of the general plan or in essence, coming out of the general plan of saying, "These are the things we want our community to get to." And you revise the zoning code as a result of that, which is a, a normal process that we would be embarking on anyways.
Okay. Okay, so at this point, I'll look for direction, discussion.
With what the mayor said, I guess we could make sure that we do go revisit this at that time, right? I mean, I mean, I don't know if we need to ask for that now as a separate type, because we went through this already, you know, talking about different things.
No, I, I want a statement if I'm going to...
Yeah, so could we have that?
...be included.
Well, what we're doing right now is zoning code text amendments. What's coming next will be actually our draft housing element, which will be, is going to the Planning Commission on December 21st, will is scheduled to come to the planning, to the city council on January 25th, I believe. These specific definitions are not included in that housing element because we're adding those to our zoning code now. So that, and then we're getting into the general plan process already, so that's where we're at in the process.
So that's what you would be asking for at that time? I understand the ordinance changes now for text amendment and that sort of thing. But maybe, maybe before, Mayor, maybe you can sit down and talk about some of the things before that comes to us, some of the things you're talking about. I think you know clearly how this council feels.
Yeah, I, I think I do and I, I, you know, even, even in the housing element, it doesn't matter if there's not a chapter on the way things should look or how it should be operated. I say it should be included.
The general thumb on the housing elements, we're, we're providing the minimum mandated requirements in a housing element. We try to stay away from giving the state more than they ask for because when you give them more, they tend to ask for more. But again, this is a, this is a document that go from Planning Commission to council so we're, we're, we'll look for your direction.
I think what, what we're asking for is more than the state's asking for. They're asking us to put this in, in a zoning area, correct?
As a principal use, correct?
Right, so we're asking to have some standards with that. That's, that's all.
But in order for that to case, it has to be applied to all residential.
I don't think that's a problem.
It's not a problem because we apply it anyway.
So as, if someone moves into a new house, regardless of whether it's a four, I mean, again, it's anybody in any situation would be, the same standards would apply. So a design review board would be applicable to anybody on a close of house process moving in. That's in essence what you're saying, which is a pretty onerous standard.
Well, it could be anybody that has residents that include more than seven people, eight people.
We have a lot of those.
Legally?
Legally, yes.
That's not second house?
We have one of the higher per household occupancies, we, we see it on our water use, we, we have a lot of homes that have that level of occupancy.
Well, that's something we could discuss though, right?
Absolutely.
But you're, you know, you're saying for, to not give the state more than what the, that, that we need to, but yet the state's asking us to give more than what we want to give. I mean, the way, the way it is, I mean, every one of us agree that, you know, we don't, we don't want to turn around and, and put a lot of this stuff into our housing element, but yet, you know, three of us pass this thing for first reading because we want to move forward with our general plan. Because I do, I do agree with Commissioner, you know, Cooper, that, you know, how mu- how much of our general plan targets have we met? I mean, how, how much of the stuff have we done? You know, that's, that's 20 years ago. You've got a whole new panel up here, you've got pretty much new panel on the Planning Commission. But to me, it goes back to, you know, we're giving the state more than, I mean, what they, what they want and they're asking more than what we want to give.
The, the simple answer there is, the state makes the rules. In order for us to have some level of local control, right, we, we want as much local control as we possibly can get. But the state is absolutely clear, in order for you to have some level of local control and have a general plan that can do the things that you as a city want to do, you have to follow these set of rules. And those rules change quite regularly. In this case, this is a, a rule, a law that was changed in 2008. They, they set the parameters in order for us to continue that local control, that's what we have to do. I mean, the prime example was redevelopment, right? That was a local control issue and the state said, "No, it's not. You," and the quote was, "You serve at our sufferance," and I E., "The idea of telling the state to stick it really isn't an option because they have all the power." Because they'd have to say, "You don't exist as a city any longer." That, that really is their trump card. Now, will they get their over zoning code text amendment? Probably not. But they ultimately do have that power over us because we don't have local control without us following their rules, as painful and as difficult as that is.
And with the general plan, we can't get six of the points approved without the seventh?
Well, you can get the six, but you're not going to have a certified general plan, which is then, all development will then cease to exist. You're, you're not able to do any development if you don't have a general plan.
And the state requires you to have a certified general plan when ours is over 20 years old?
We are in that cycle where they have been asking and we will begin to get on that later screen. We're already there.
Well, the problem with not having one developed or adopted or approved is, we could take action on, let's just say hypothetically, the project on the West Side. And if an environmental group wants to come and challenge and sue that project, they could do it and they could stop the project. So if we turn around and we continue to, to waive and, and do the second reading on this, theoretically, theoretically, we can come back and put our own teeth in these ordinances we want to?
No. Oh, you can, but what that will do, will set another, as we mentioned, will set another thing, set of actions in motion, which is the next round of the housing element. So we have until 120 days from December 31st for our next round of our housing element to be certified. And that process is started December 21st with the Planning Commission and the city council in order for us to hit that. If we do not hit that, our housing element cycle for review then shortens from an eight-year cycle to a four-year cycle, which creates more additional work. And again, we wouldn't have a certified housing element because these elements are required from our previous housing element.
But what I'm asking is, if we turn around and approve this and that we are, our housing element can meet its cycle, and then come February and March, we can come in and reword some of these to fit ourselves? We've already got it sent off to be, to, to be certified?
More of a legal question than a staff question.
The answer's yes. And there's a timing issue for us because of where we're at. Some of these issues that I hear you talking about are a matter of degree. I think that's why Tom W. didn't want to say, "Yes, we could have design guidelines for everything because it's a matter of degree and that's detail we couldn't answer as we sit here tonight." But we do need to get this one in. And if you make changes, as I've heard it, another thing we'd probably have to do is make this another first reading and then have a, a second reading. And I'm not sure how that affects our timing on this. So that, that's a complication I see. So I would concur with the other staff and that is, we recommend that you pass this now and then we come back and try to address your other concerns down the road.
So if we come back down the road and, and, and put our teeth in it, do we have to send it back to the state for recertification because we reworded some things? Not the general plan. See? So, so the thing of it is, if we turn around and pass this right now and collectively we get together with the commission and, or the council, we sit down, we find out the guidelines that we can do and what kind of teeth we could do it, come, let's say, March or April, we can put our own guidelines or parameters on this. Your next housing element won't be approved?
Yeah, I, I think the best time to do that is get this all approved, get our housing element in, get our general plan approved, then come back and look the ordinances after that. I think that'd be the time to do it.
So that's basically what I was getting at.
It'd be a two-year time, but you know what? Where's our housing element been anyway? I mean, I mean, I know it's there.
Four years late.
But...
No.
In the past. I mean, what have we done with it? I mean, sure, it's given us some guidelines, but, you know, the state wants you to do a whole lot of things and you got to have all this area for it. Where have we really gone with it?
2011 redevelopment went away and, and there was no development, what's to speak of. And so there wasn't really a lot that was done in terms of affordable housing, a couple first-time homebuyer loans that were given within that timeframe, but there really hasn't been a lot at all. But I think that had to do with a number of contributing factors.
So my recommendation would be, let's get this thing approved and come back as a council in two years and do what we want.
Because our housing element now will be on, on an eight-year cycle, correct?
Yes, sir.
You know, my only thing is, is, you know, we're sitting up here having this conversation and we talked a long time ago about doing a general plan. So, I mean, the way I see it is either we are going to do the general plan and if we don't want to do the general plan, then we don't have to do this. Bottom line. You know? But I think as a council, we've decided that that's an important part of what the next process is for a city.
Correct.
So, I mean, that's, that's the thing I'm struggling with. I mean, I understand the state and we said, and again, not to reiterate, we don't like it. Well, there's a lot of things I don't like about what's written in here. But, you know, we spent a lot of time, we had the workshops for the, for the general plan, we're in the process, staff's been working diligently and getting that taken care of. This becomes a thing where I think as a council that we have to sit on board with it and go forward and, and find out whatever the bumps in the roads are going to come and then try to get it so it fits our, our needs as far as the city's concerned. Period.
Making a motion.
All right, I move for item six. A, B, and C for approval.
Second.
Now, is that to bring back the ordinance at a later date?
Well, I don't think we have to.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that that's something that, that we need to do after...
This gets approved.
After everything gets approved because it's just text amendment anyway.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Councilmember DeRocet?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
No.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Vera?
Yes.
Passes four to one, thank you.
Next, we will move to the public hearing. We have no, first of all, we have no unfinished business. Next, public hearing, ordinance number 2015-1035, adding chapter 9.120, marijuana cultivation and delivery to title nine, public peace, safety, and morals of the series municipal code, CMC. Who's giving the update on that? Tom, you drew the short straw.
That's mine, yes. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, the state currently allows the use of medicinal marijuana since 1996. Recently, I believe it was in October, the governor signed three bills that will allow some additional local control over the medical marijuana, provided that we pass an ordinance by, that's effective by March 1st. So when you figure in the 30 days we need for an ordinance to be effective and the, the two readings, we want to have the first reading tonight, a second reading in January, and then have the 30 days effective period after that, should you choose to go forward. Now, the laws do give the, you the option of banning all cultivation and delivery in addition to dispensaries and that's what staff has proposed for you tonight. Again, that's all provided that we pass this by March 1st. A lot of questions I get in the other jurisdictions when this comes up is, "Well, if this just passed, if it gets legalized next year, what does this mean?" Well, it would mean that this would basically go away for the most part, if recreational marijuana is allowed. But again, in order to preserve your local control that you have at this point, again, at the, we're at the sufferance of the state, I recommend that you introduce this as presented. You also have the option to scale it back if you so choose.
And it's my understanding, Tom, that we, by taking action, we keep control. I know that the Turlock City Council wrestled with the same thing and then this allows them to bring it back if something were to change after the first of the year. But if we do nothing, the state takes control and whatever they say happens.
Exactly.
Okay. Until such time as there's a, an election and the public decides what's going to happen.
If it changes next year and everything's legal, then out the window. But I know the chief would attest, you know, we do have some increase in crime with the increased marijuana grows in the city, so that's kind of the practical policy basis for the presentation.
Councilmember Lane?
Yeah, this here is consistent. I know you, the city managers have been speaking about this and that sort of thing. So consistent, pretty much with what everybody else is doing. Toby?
Yeah, my, as of right now, all the cities are heading in that direction. The, the one exception would be Modesto has a potential with their most recent workshop where they have a, a potential of allowing some indoor cultivation, but they are a little bit, they did a workshop first rather than going straight. Everyone else is right there on the cusp of either having their public hearing scheduled and consistent, the outright ban, correct?
Okay, at this, oh, anyone else? At this time, I'll open it up to the public if anyone would like to speak on this item.
Is there any thing we can do about controlling how much each individual... Is there any thing we can do about controlling how much each individual can grow, and is it for their own use only, not for sale to other people and stuff? Is there ways we can control that within the city, so that we're not becoming Pot City USA, and, and growing enough for Los Angeles, and, and Turlock, and Modesto, and Stockton, and wherever else? Because I think the only way to really control it is just, if we can get it down to where it's individuals, it's for individuals only in the city, and it's not for open market or anything like that. Is there anything we can do that?
The ordinance as presented would not allow any cultivation. Goes as far as we can go.
Okay, so, so cultivating it in series is a no-no? Okay.
If, if the council so chooses, effective March 1st.
That's a good idea to me. I mean, we got them, people are using it whether it's legal or not, and I'm not sure, but is it still against the law in the, in the United States? Is it still against the federal law?
Yes, it is.
I, I think where, where the challenge comes is, obviously, we all know some people out there that use it for medical needs, and if they were, and, and those would probably cultivate the right amount, but it's the people who start off cultivating like that, and then decide, well, 50 or 100 plants might help pay the rent, and before you know it, they're cultivating it.
That's what I'm wanting to, to stop.
And then the thieves know that it's there pretty soon, and before you know it, the police are dealing with a big problem with, with...
I'm, I'm glad to hear that we can say, "No cultivation," thank you.
So that, that, that seems to be the, the challenge. I'll wait till everybody's done. Okay.
Rosalinda Vera, and I'm at 1084 Hackett Road. And my concern is, I do have someone that lives near me that does grow it illegally, obviously. They had a shooting last weekend, two weekends ago. Shooting, and then the guy goes running, trying to run over the other guy. That scares me. I live basically across the street from an elementary school, across the street from a park with a lot of illegal drugs. I get it blown into my yard all the time, so that, it just kinda scares me. I don't wanna increase it, and if they're gonna have it very far from the schools, very far from the student, children, and I don't wanna see it in my neighborhood, I don't want another shooting. I have kids in my house. I do not want bullets coming through my garage again. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
Well, I mean, as, as I'm reading this thing, and, and I've read it and, and mulled over it, and I, when we were talking, I, I'm trying to look over it again. Correct me, what we're doing is, we are establishing the ordinance with the terms marijuana cultivation, delivery in this, and in, in another set of ordinances, we already outlaw those things. Am I correct?
Dispensaries are currently outlawed, this would outlaw, continue to outlaw dispensaries, and then any cultivation or...
Now, would we have to come back and reword it, because I'm trying to see where it says that it's prohibited with what we're approving? Because to me, I'm reading it, I read it yesterday, and, and it, and it basically, it says, "All we're doing is, is reading the word amendments to the ordinance." And I don't see anywhere in here where it says prohibit.
Section 9.120.050 prohibition of marijuana cultivation, page 13, agenda item 13, page 8, page 166 of the package.
Page, page 13? Oh, back here. Oh, in the ordinance thing, okay.
That's, that's what we're approving.
That's all part of the other, other, okay.
Okay, at this time, I'll look for the direction of the council.
I, I have a question.
I'm sorry.
Actually, just a clarification, on 9/12/030 and 9/12/040, it references the Director of Public Safety, and I think that needs to be changed to the Police Chief, since we don't have a Director of Public Safety.
That's correct, it's a very good catch.
Okay. That's all.
I move to have this ordinance be read by title and number only.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember De Rosset?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Mayor Vera?
Yes.
Passes 5-0, thank you.
I move to approve ordinance number 2015...
Doesn't she have to read it first?
That's right.
Sorry?
Go ahead.
Actually, you, you read the title already, so we're, so, okay. No, we've already read the title, and you waived the readings other than by title already in the agenda, so we're good to go. We just need the motion to introduce.
Okay.
Okay.
And we did that.
Okay.
I move to approve ordinance number 2015-1035 for introduction and first reading.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second, can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember De Rosset?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Lang?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Mayor Vera?
Yes.
Passes 5-0, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have no new business, no discussion items. Councilmember Referrals, is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda? Okay, hearing none. Reports, I just have one thing I wanna report. First of all, I would like to thank all of my colleagues for helping out this Saturday in the Third Annual Mayoral Challenge of the ringing of the bell for the Salvation Army. We took part in the Walmart, in front of the Walmart, and I have not got the results yet of whether we have won, which we have done the last two years in a row. But I have learned that we raised $1,120.47, which is twice what we did last year. I think we did about 800 and something the first year, and we won, and we did 600 last year and won. So I'm hopeful, and Paul Caruso thinks that we have, hopefully, that we have won again. And I, again, wanted to thank all of my colleagues and all of the citizens of Series, it's a great cause, and I, I can't say enough about the citizens that come out and, and dig into their, their wallets and their purses and, and drop money in there. So I wanna thank them for that, and again, thank all the council for helping out with that. Without you, it wouldn't, wouldn't have been able to be achieved, so, but thank you for that. That's all I had. Councilmember Rhino?
I just wanna wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a safe New Year.
Okay. Merry Christmas. Vice Mayor?
That's it, Merry Christmas.
Councilmember Lang?
The opening of Christmas Tree Lane was another successful evening. I, I was asked by Santa Claus to help him out that night, and certainly was willing to do that, and I gotta tell you, just had a wonderful time with the kids. And, you know, Mrs. Claus, who was my wife, encouraged the kids to talk to Santa Claus. And so, you know, there were so many kids, it was, it was actually a moving time for me, when kids would ask, you know, Santa Claus, "What could Santa Claus bring you for Christmas?" And I, I won't forget, two of them said they would like blankets. I wish I could've just did this, you know, and gave it to them. And then there was one little boy, I shared this with Jeff the other night. One little boy, probably six, seven years old, got on my lap, and he said, "Santa," he says, "You know, I have pretty much everything." He goes, "What I'd like for you to do is, is take toys and gifts to all the kids that don't have anything." Broke my heart, you know, it was just, just, I mean, believe me, there's those kids still out there today, right? So, you know, had a wonderful time, I will look forward to, again, next year, if I'm able to do that. And also, I would like to say Merry Christmas, ho, ho, ho. And have a safe holiday with your family, and New Year also. We'll see you all next year.
Councilmember De Rosset?
That'd be tough to follow, right? Just Merry Christmas. I know it's Friday night, they had the Chamber Mixer for the Christmas, and the Chamber did an outstanding job, as always. Just Merry Christmas to everybody, and have a good New Year.
Okay, Christine?
Just wanted to wish you all a Merry Christmas and have a safe New Year.
Thank you. Mr. Hallahan? Mr. Wells?
Just a couple, couple of quick reminders of a couple of meetings coming up. On Wednesday, two meetings, actually, the first one is a Stan Cog meeting of the Policy Board, is at 6 o'clock. Probably one of the more important meetings that they will have had in the past year, which they will be considering, the kind of framework for the expenditure plan for half-cent sales tax that is proposed tenetively for the ballot of next year, 2016, in November. So that's a, that's a pretty big item, and there's been quite a bit of conversation about that, so more to come. If that does pass from the Policy Board, it'll be coming back to this body, as we look into the details of the expenditure plan, what it means for Series, and looking at projects, in essence, creating the wish list of those projects that we would like to see for us out of a proposed expenditure plan of probably 25 years, is the most likely scenario if that were to pass. Secondly, the Measure H Committee, which was originally scheduled for November, we had some conflicts with the existing commission members or board members there, and so we rescheduled that, and that meeting is Wednesday at 6 o'clock as well. And other than that, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Westbrook.
Merry Christmas.
All right, Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Merry Christmas, looking forward to this next year.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, I wanna thank Toby for this microphone, first of all. Tonight, we did Shop with a Cop at the Series Walmart. Last year, we did five families, this year, we did 10. And it was put on, or actually, the Partnership for Healthy Children, they're the ones that chose the families. And so we also, Walmart donated $2,500, and we had a lot of other donors, including some of you, so thank you. You can follow us on Twitter, on Facebook, I really think you should take a look at what we did tonight. Other than that, Merry Christmas. One more thing, Saturday, the 19th, we're gonna wrap gifts right here at 8 o'clock.
Mr. Nichols?
Just to give you a brief little update, we'll be doing firefighter testing interviews on tomorrow. We've already, we're getting ready to conduct the engineer interviews, and we've already done the captain's interviews. And as we move forward towards doing, going away from the alternate staffing plan with a safer grant, firefighters being hired, we'll keep you updated on what date the Station 3 will be open. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Mr. Hallam?
It's a new routine, passing the mic. Anyway, I'll just join the others in wishing you and your family a wonderful Christmas.
Okay, Mr. Britton?
Merry Christmas.
Jeremy?
Merry Christmas.
All right. With that, we will go ahead and adjourn to our next regular scheduled meeting, which will be January 11th, 2016. So everybody have a safe holiday, thank you.